Good evening, I'm Mayor Mark Northrup. I'd like to welcome everybody here for the Hudsonville City Commission Regular Session dated February 14th, 2023. Calling this to order, the scouts from Arrow of Light will be leading us in presentation of the colors and the pledge of allegiance. Scouts, please stand.
Color guard, attention. May the audience please rise. Scouts salute. Color guard, forward march. Color guard, halt. Cross the colors. Color guard, post the colors. May the audience please join me in pledge of allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Two. The audience please. I, all scouts, pledge to our own South Old Town law. On my honor, I will do my best to do my duty, to protect my country, to obey the South law, to help other people at all times, to keep myself physically strong, mentally awake, and morally straight. A scout is trustworthy, loyal, helpful, friendly, courteous, kind, obedient, cheerful, dirty, brave, clean, and reverent. Color guard dismissed.
Very good, thank you. City Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner Bullheys?
Here.
Branson?
Here.
DeBrey?
Here.
Grope?
Here.
LaRar?
Here.
Nitre?
Here.
Mayor Northrup?
Here. Now is an opportunity for a moment of silence. I think most here on the dais know that I lost my beloved black lab of 14 years, so today was a tough day at my household. So my moment of silence is for her, your moment of silence is a private matter, thank you. Thank you. Now is the time for public comments. We do have, I know, one new resident. If you want to just step forward and introduce yourself, you're certainly welcome. These new residents bought, purchased a home that the city has been struggling with for years about how to repurpose the home, move the home, recover the home, make the home a place where a family can be raised and be part of our community. So they purchased the home on 32nd that will soon someday be Berry, on the Berry Avenue. And if the residents, they're sitting there in the back with their three children, and we just want to acknowledge how fortunate we are for you to purchase that home, and we look forward to having you as a resident in our community for years to come. But that home represents a lot of, a lot of emotional, what is the word I'm looking for? Hmm? Capital, investment on the part of the city, not just mention a lot of financial investment. So thank you for purchasing that home. We look forward to having you for many years here, for many years. Thank you. Anybody else in public would like to address the dais? Hearing and seeing none. If the scouts could all just stand up, please? And if you could all maybe just give us your name and maybe the school that you attend and your grade, if you would. Up here, boys. Whoever wants to start first?
My name is Riley and I go to Jamestown Elementary.
Okay, so you're Riley and you go to Jamestown? Okay, thank you.
My name is Adam and I go to Park Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
Adam from Park, fifth elementary, fifth grade?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
My name is Ben and I go to Park Elementary and I'm in third grade.
Ben, third grader from Park? Very good, thank you.
My name is Chase and I go to Park Elementary, fifth grade.
Chase from Park, fifth grade, you said?
Yep.
Very good.
My name is Ben. I'm from Park Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
Ben from Park, fifth grade, thank you.
My name is Chris. I'm from Brasley Elementary and I'm in fifth grade.
It's Brasley?
Brasley.
From Genison, and you said you're in fifth grade? And I believe that you have some special credit being the first girl to come up through the ranks in your scout organization, congratulations. And hang in there, boys and girls, or scouts, we're very proud of all of you and thank you for a fine job presenting the colors tonight, that's very meaningful. And I believe you are dismissed, your families are welcome to stay, but I think you might not find it very interesting. It's up to you. Thank you. Thank you, Scoutmaster. Now I'd like to carry on to the consent agenda items. There are three. Minutes of the City Commission Regular Session dated January 10th. I'd also like to thank Phil LaRar for, as mayor pro tem, covering for me, because I clearly was unable to lead that meeting. Second one is minutes of City Commission Work Session dated January 24th. That was the tour by Department Head Mike Klosterhouse of City Hall for the City Commission. And the last one is the minutes of the Downtown Vailment Authority dated January 11th. Are there any changes or additions to those minutes? Hearing none. Do I need a call?
Make a motion to move the consent agenda.
Yep, second that.
It's been moved and supported. This is a voice call. All those who favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. The consent agenda items carry. Moving on to new business, the January Public Safety Statistical Reports. Fire Chief, you are up and you're the hero of the night. You know why.
Good evening. For the month of January, we had 38 calls for service. The majority of those were medicals, a few traffic crashes due to the weather. And then, if you look in the reports, I did add a page for mutual aid. And there's mutual aid and auto aid, and I'll do that each month, because we don't reflect on mutual aid calls anymore as a type of call. Now they're just a type of response. So if you look on the signature fourth page there, you'll see that we have auto aid and mutual aid both. And then we went to Jamestown twice and Georgetown twice, and then Jamestown came in to help us once in the month of January. So most of those were traffic crashes with Jamestown. Georgetown was a fire at Ellenboss, small fire, and the other one I believe was a fire alarm at Sunset, something like that. Just a little more information for you, to let you know on our mutual aid and auto aid.
Thanks for including that.
You liked that?
We spoke about that.
Yep. And then I included the life report. The times are getting better. January will be reflective of much better response, but they still are struggling in a few areas. This report is from December. They're just a little bit behind on their reporting, but some of the priority threes are getting a little lengthy. So between the city manager and myself, I think we'll kind of talk about that in the future, what we can do to alleviate that problem a little bit. Any questions?
Hearing none. Thank you, Fire Chief, but before you leave, why don't you go ahead and speak to the item number six, the FEMA grant, so you don't have to come up here twice?
Sure. The FEMA grant is something that started in the fourth quarter of 2021. We started putting together documentation to apply for a FEMA grant, and it was FEMA's fiscal year 2021. And the grant that we applied for was assistance in purchasing self-contained breathing apparatus, what we call RSCBA's. That is what the firefighter wears on their back. It's a bottle, it's a harness, it's a mask, and that's what we go into the house or fight a car fire with for breathing air. Ours are outdated. Ours are probably 20-some years old for the harnesses. The bottles have a 15-year life, so at 15 years, we have to throw them away. They're just no good. Say they're no good, they still work, it's just NFPA says we have to throw them away at 15 years. We are getting limited on the number of bottles, and it's a big expense. So we wrote a grant for it, and the grant that we wrote included us and Blenheim Township and Chester Township. So three departments collectively went in. We took the lion's share of it as far as the work, did the writing of the grant. We submitted that application in January of 2022, and we were just awarded now in January of 2023. The total equipment that will be purchased is right around $530,000 collectively among all three departments. FEMA is going to kick in of that total about $501,000. So our benefit here in Hudsonville is going to be right around $160,000 from FEMA for the equipment. Now that money originally would have come from capital improvement, now it doesn't have to. So we still will have a share, we'll have to pay our share towards that, plus there's been some cost increases, still working through those numbers. Somewhere in that $30,000 to $40,000 will still be our buy-in for that. So we'll get roughly $190,000 to $200,000 worth of equipment, and it'll cost us 30 to 40 grand. That's kind of how the bottom line lays out. Timeline right now is, once it gets approved tonight to accept it, we'll keep working on pricing, doing that collectively with the other two townships, and get some good pricing on that. Our goal, if everything goes smoothly, is to have a purchase order in March, and then try to get the equipment in service second quarter of this year. It was a good day when we got that phone call. We were pretty happy.
What about the other departments, the other Chester?
They're pretty happy with us, too. They, they-
You made a lot of friends.
Yeah, they, they, we put a good foot forward. So we did our, we did our neighbors some good.
That's important, too. Any questions or comments from the commissioners? Just, Chief, on behalf of all of us, we were just, when I saw that, I was just floored. I was, that was just a wow, it was a wow moment we don't get too often in our lives, but-
Yeah, well, I was sitting in my office and we were actually working on this year's grant when the phone rang and on the caller ID it said US Senate. And I thought, oh, it's either good or bad news. And it was, it was representative from Senator Stapenau's office, and that was the good news. So that was pretty cool.
Maybe we need to do a thank you letter or anything? I don't know, how do we follow up on that? Is there anything we need to do as staff or mayor or not?
Anything to thank you letter would hurt.
Okay, let's, let's, let's put that on the agenda every next time and do a thank you letter for my signature. Any other questions for the Fire Chief? Appreciate the report. I'll ask for the motion at the end of the other two's discussion. Sergeant, I think you're up. You're looking a little red tonight, Jeff.
Hey, it was a sunny day and I was skiing, so it was a good thing, so. I have my legs yet, so that's even better. So month of January, it was, it was steady 219 calls. I did some year-end work as far as traffic crashes, as you probably read on the report, 244 crashes in the city, and I'm going to say a large majority of those crashes are the 32nd Avenue quarter. So our number one intersection is 32nd and I-196. I was a little bit surprised by this, because usually it was either New Holland or Highland Drive, but the 2022 stats show definitely that location. That's obviously a newer intersections. I feel like there's a lot more speed going on underneath the viaducts because people are getting off the highways, but that was our number one, but every single one of them was 32nd Avenue. Number six was actually 36th and Chicago Drive, and there was way less crashes than the other top five, so it's very clear. Also for the month of January, all, every deputy went through a 12-hour in-service training. We have our next one come up in March, but we did a lot of legal update stuff, we did four hours of jujitsu, so that was quite something. So we learned quite a bit. So we had lots of, lots of stuff going on, trying to hone our skills as best as we can. That's about all I have for now, unless you guys have any questions.
Anything for the sergeant? I spoke to the sergeant earlier on, I think that maybe it might be nice to have just a short piece in the newsletter concerning how dangerous 32nd Avenue is in terms of traffic, and to cause some awareness on the residents that 32nd is something that we are focused on, due to the fact that the top five are all on 32nd. And I think maybe we could discuss there briefly that there is plans, do some restriping and lane enhancements and additional easements to more, make another lane.
I think a turn lane at New Holland would be very beneficial as well.
So I think if we could just have a short article in the next newsletter, I think that'd be beneficial to our constituency. Any thought on that? Phil, I see you over there.
I just wanted to tell you, Jeff, I appreciate what you did here about the top five locations. I, the one that's not on there that kind of surprises me is the New Holland one.
I know.
I would bet that that would have been in the top five.
Yep, I was just a surprise, so.
But that is eye-opening, that list to go also in there. Here it is.
There's your top five right there.
Every single one 32nd Avenue.
Yep.
And don't call it the Georgetown Raceway, please.
I didn't even come out of my mouth.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Mike, that's wise, Mark. That's wise to include that in there.
Yeah, okay. Appreciate it. Thank you, Jeff. Dave, good evening. Nice, nice pink shirt, I couldn't do it.
You're stuck on the pink shirt.
I just, that's something nice.
Not even gonna talk for me. All right, so I passed out an updated report, just because the, I discovered the importance of doing things in the, in the right order. It's, it's, it's update, save, attach, not update, attach, save. So the one you have in your, in your packet is obviously incomplete. I wanted to mention a couple things. So we had a department staff meeting in January, New Year's Day holiday, and what did we decide as a department is when, when the department meeting falls on a, on a holiday weekend like that, if it's in the summer, we'll reschedule it. If it's January, in the middle of winter, we don't have a lot going on, so we just, we just cancel it. So we, we're not going to miss three or four meetings a year because of this, because July, September, things like that, we will actually reschedule and make sure we do have a department meeting. The leadership meeting for the county emergency management, I'm a part of that group, that was an opportunity for us to get a training schedule back, and my team benefits a lot from that. We get a training, probably, oh, I think we do eight, nine training events a year with the county. They provide us training on things like traffic direction, first aid, CPR, asthmat awareness, things like that. And that has been off the calendar for a few years, and so I kind of pushed a lot to get it back on the calendar, and now we have our calendar back. And then the other thing I wanted to highlight was in the, in the stats where it says additional volunteer hours, what those are, those are the hours that my team spends helping another community, just purely as volunteers, unpaid time, going to Grand Haven for the Coast Guard Festival and for their Fourth of July, MARN for the MARN Fest, 5K and parade, things like that. That's what those additional volunteer hours are. My team enjoys what they do, so they like going and helping other communities. And that number went up this year because other communities have figured out that we like doing this, and now we're getting more calls. So, well, I will manage that, I'll make sure that we don't get volunteer fatigue. I want to make sure my team is ready for anything Hudsonville needs, and we don't let other municipalities kind of sap our energy. Any questions?
Anything for Dave from the commissioners? Anytime? It just occurred to me, it might be nice if you could just add a line to your monthly that would say the number of staff you currently have, and if you're over or under or satisfied with your staff count. If you could do that, what is your staff count right now?
There are 12 of us, including, including me, and I was right where I wanted to be.
Yeah, so that'd be kind of a nice addition so that we know where we are, because I know we always struggle with having enough, and it'd be nice, what's your ideal number? What's your target?
We are, really, for what we have in the city, having 12 of us, we can manage pretty much everything, so I'm not looking for anybody new right now.
Okay, that's important for us to know, so, very good. Thank you, Dave.
You're welcome.
Moving on to item number eight, I will ask for a motion. Item number six, sorry.
Make a motion to authorize the Fire Chief to accept the FEMA grant award EMW-2021-FG 06291 and to move forward in obtaining pricing for the SCBA equipment.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner LaRar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Grope?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, and I'll say it once again, thank you, Steve. Well done to you and your, and all the staff that participated. And it's more than just for us, it's what we did for the other communities, and that reflects well in us as being a leader in the, in the West Michigan. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number seven, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the purchase of 1,525 feet of 1 and 3/4-inch fire hose from Phoenix Safety Outfitters for a cost of $4,901.93.
Second motion. It's been moved and supported by the Finance Committee. I believe this was low bid, is that correct? You're close to low bid or almost spot on, same, but I guess there was some, there's a, I guess a local vendor, was it a local vendor that we went with?
Right, there were, there were two bids that were, that were within $36 of each other. This is a preferred vendor, it's a local sales rep, works well with us, we buy a lot of stuff from him. He was close enough, I felt, let's just keep our business with him.
Very good.
And this fire hose is something that we've been looking at for a couple of years, it's kind of the continuation of the 5-inch we bought a year ago, now this is some attack line. The funding comes from the capital improvement, it was budgeted for the fiscal year 2223, which we're currently in, and yeah, it's going to replace all the attack line on the pumper and on the ladder truck, both.
What do you do with the old hoses? Do you, how do you dispose them? The old hoses?
Yeah, so the old hose, some of it's going to be shot because of the inside lining comes out, that's where it starts to separate. Some of the better stuff, we'll probably put on the rack for spare, in case we need additional hose, backup, or whatever, but in time, we can get rid of it. And I know I've had some people express a little interest, right, that they'd like a section or two. And if, Fourth of July, if you have a trash can on fire, we could ditch a-
Well done. Well done. Just saying. Anything else for the Fire Chief?
I love being able to help with the equipment, especially after you have a $500,000 grant. I'm surprised you didn't try to sneak a few more purchases in right after that, that's used to goodwill. Okay, good.
Thank you, Steve. There's a motion on the floor, any other discussion? Notwithstanding dumpster fires in front of the mayor's house. Roll call, please. Clerk?
Commissioner Grope?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Yes, motion carries. Moving on to now, item number eight, which should be your regional-
No, yeah, that's right.
Regional-
Mitigation.
Hazard mitigation plan. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve Resolution Number 23-1759, adopting a 2022 regional hazard mitigation plan for Kent County, Ottawa County, and the city of Grand Rapids.
Support. It's been moved and supported. There's a memo in the packet, I think it's pretty self-explanatory, unless you want to speak more to it, Steve, or not, I don't-
Yeah, I can, or Dave, you can.
Or Dave, it's either one, if you want to- Sure, that'd be good for us, go ahead, please.
So this is updated every five years. Several years ago, might have been 2004 timeframe was the, was the original, and we get guidance from, from Ottawa County, of course, and then I pulled together all of our public safety leaders and we, and not only public safety, but also Bob from DPW, and we look at planning and zoning, and say, okay, what things are important to us? What hazards do we think we have? So in, we ended up with, we originally had five, we're now down to four because one of them has been fully resolved, and three of the four remaining, we have great progress on, and at least two of them will probably come off the list at the next update. So it's been a good checklist for us to kind of make sure we're on track to, to address some of these things, and by doing that, we're eligible for FEMA grants. If we didn't have, if we didn't sign onto this plan, we would not be able to get hazard mitigation grants from FEMA.
So you were the lead with the other entities also?
Pardon me?
You were the lead in putting this together?
I'm the guy that scheduled the meeting. But yeah, I'm the point person for it, and pull the rest of, of our agencies together to kind of do a review and figure out what, what needs to be on that list.
Good for you, thank you. I got to ask, Dave, are you following what's happening in Ohio with the tanker train derailment?
A bit. I haven't been able to get a lot of updates. It was a really busy day at work today, so I haven't been able to check news over the course of the day, but yeah, that, with the rail line we have going through here, it's, of course, unnerving to, to be reading about that.
It's been a while since I've done a tabletop exercise. Is there one scheduled in the future?
We don't have one on the, on the books yet, but yeah, we, I think it would be good to revisit that question, since we have some new people involved, not only here, but at the county. And it was a good tabletop when we did it last time. We didn't identify any, any major things, we identified minor things to tweak, which was normal, but we, our communication plan worked, everybody knew roles and responsibilities, so, but I think it would be good to refresh that.
We just know we're vulnerable with our train track through the city, and they do run some bombs through there, so. Okay, any other discussion for Dave? Very good. I'd like, I'd love to get your input on your sense on what happened in Ohio, because it just sounds like it's just going to go even bad or worse, and it's pretty ugly.
Let me, let me get caught up on the, on the news tonight and get the, get the latest, and yeah, we'll talk.
Very good. There's no motion on the floor, any other discussion? Roll call, please.
Commissioner Branson?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeBrey?
Yes.
Grope?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrup?
Motion, yes, motion carries. Moving on to item number nine, City Treasurer, Monthly Reports for December. Are you Tyler, you going to take the lead on this one, or were you just going to?
I have Ashley here, Mr. Mayor, if there's any questions with regards to the report.
Just, if we could just roll through the report here real quick. First one is the City of Hudsonville General Fund Summary. I think if you look at that, it's a little bit misleading, because we have a huge blue line there from the addition of the ARPA funds, is that correct, Ashley? Yeah, in August. Why was the August number so huge there for revenue? Do you recall?
Taxes.
That's how the taxes are delivered?
It's the summer taxes.
Summer taxes, okay.
Taxes, command.
The next slide is the revenue, but there's where we, I think, show on the orange in December, where we got the ARPA funds, is that correct? I believe so.
Last year.
Yeah. For December last year, right. Revenue comparison to date. That's what through that, kind of throws that a wonk. Expenditures stays fairly consistent. And then the last one is the investment report. I really like this report, as probably all of the people in the Finance Committee and I think all the commissioners appreciate it, because it really shows our, our general fund, our investment that we're sitting on, a little over $10 million, which is what our target is, I believe. Are we under a little bit right now, maybe? Are we, are we at our target of, what is it, 28% I believe?
I do know for this fiscal year, we budgeted a little bit under that, but the hopes in the next few years to catch up to-
Yeah, we had a little catch up, yeah, because we have had some expenditures, but the funding isn't good, and I think what I really liked there is we see those CDs that come due, and we've, we've turned them over, and we've been making better money, and I'm sure Kayla next month will, will advise us there. Anything else to add, Ashley? Tyler?
Nothing at this time.
Let's move on to payment of the bills. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the payment of the bills in the amount of $466,176.09 and to confirm payment of bills paid between meetings and reviewed by the Finance Committee.
Support. It's been moved and supported by the Finance Committee and discussion. Hearing done, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gro, sorry, DeBrey?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Grope?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes. Motion carries. Pay the bills. Moving on to ACH funds distribution. Is there a motion?
Make a motion to confirm the funds distributed by Automated Clearinghouse in the amount of $330,945.05, which were distributed between meetings and reviewed by the city manager.
Support. Reviewed by the city manager and by the Finance Committee. Thank you very much. Is there any other discussion? There's motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
LaRar?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes. Distribute the funds. Moving on to item number 12, Necessary Property Acquisitions for 32nd Avenue Terneling at New Holland Street. I'll ask for the motion first, and then I'll turn this over to the city attorney.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution number 23-1760 for the declaration of necessity for a public improvement project to widen 32nd Avenue and to acquire permanent easements for such project.
Support. It's been moved and supported. Thank you, Commissioner Phil. With that, I'll turn this over to the city attorney to brief us.
All right, sounds good. So you're all very familiar with this project, I think. The goal here is to widen 32nd Avenue north of New Holland Street to make it safer, and this process has been underway for quite some time. The city's engineers have determined that in order to do this, you're going to have to obtain approximately eight feet in permanent easements on four properties. And I don't know if you've had a chance to look at the map, but I'm happy to share that with you at some point. So there's two different ways to go about this. The preferred approach, of course, is to approach the property owners and negotiate the purchase of these easements with them, and we have started that process. So we sent letters to the property owners. We have yet to hear back from one of them, and I'm not going to name names, but we're going to follow up one more time and just make sure they know that this has to happen, and that we would like to meet with them and negotiate an offer to purchase the easement. That being said, there's no harm in adopting this resolution tonight, declaring this a public improvement, and declaring that the city deems it necessary to take this property for this public improvement for the use or benefit of the public. So it's the first step in the process. Again, no harm in adopting this. The hope remains that we can enter into friendly negotiations with all four property owners in order to obtain these easements and be done with that. Any questions?
One quick question on the value of that, from their perspective. How do we determine a value for that easement?
Okay, so that's a very important part of this process. It's actually set forth in the statute. So what you're doing tonight authorizes the staff to finalize that as well. So it authorizes them to finalize the easements, which I believe are about 80% done, and then also to arrive at a fair market value, because you are required by law to offer fair market value for these easements. So you can either get appraisals for that, or you can, you don't need to be that formal about it. You can work with your assessor to arrive at a fair market value. And then you take your logic and you approach the property owner and say, here's what we think it's worth, and they have the opportunity to review that and come up with their own value if they would like to. Does that answer the question?
It does. It just, it makes me a little bit nervous because it's so subjective, because it's such a small piece, and all the appraisals are based on acreage or lots.
Right.
And these are such small square footage. I'm just curious how that goes and what we use to determine it.
Right. Although I would say that, so appraisers and assessors are really quite accustomed to dividing parcels up and making these unique, I mean, you'd be surprised at what they can value. And it's sort of a science and an art. But, you know, to the extent that you feel strongly about that, then you could always hire an appraiser to do it, as opposed to using your assessor, yeah.
Hopefully, we have friendly negotiations, like you said. Everybody understands each party's perspective, and we can move forward, so.
Right. And so far, again, the feedback I've received has been quite positive, actually.
Good.
And they recognize the need for this, so.
Good, thanks.
Mr. Mayor, if I may. Having recently gone through this process, I couldn't agree more. It is an art and a science. As we get those numbers, I'd be more than happy to break that down and explain it, because this won't be the last time that we use a process like this for future developments. And I think it'd be great for the commission and members of the public to kind of understand it. It does get technical at times, but as we continue to follow the strategic plan with the city, I'd be more than happy to break that down and do my best to explain it, and we're bringing the right people. But I think it'd be a good learning lesson for everybody.
I think we went through something very similar with the Berry Street realignment.
Yes, we did.
Just a lot of back and forth conversations.
Yep.
And I don't need to be apprised on all of that. I'm just curious, so I'm sure you guys can handle that.
Pretty interesting.
Mr. Mayor, I had one other question as well. Does, in terms of the footage, does that account for all of the city services adjacent to it, or does that mean, like, for example, city sidewalk would be outside of that as well, or is that the extent that we need to acquire?
So, I'm sorry, do you have an explanation?
No, go ahead.
So, do you guys have a map in front of you?
Yes, it's on the screen.
Oh, it is.
I guess my eyes aren't good enough for that map.
It's a little blurry.
And it's very small. And I don't think the city engineer is here tonight, but I'm going to have to confirm that for you and get back to you. I don't know if the sidewalk is an addition to that. I think it is. And I think it might differ a little bit, because one of the parcels, we're actually going to need a slightly larger piece. So I can catch up with Don and get you better sketches and give you a better indication of what it's going to look like.
Is the easement just for the road improvement, then? Is an easement not needed for the sidewalk space?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Bob, are we asking all the right questions?
Yeah, I might be able to add a little bit to that, if you don't mind. No, I apologize. Because of the timing of the grant funding, I think we have a September 30 window on this, so we did just have the GI meeting today with MDOT at 1:00. I spoke to Jessica quick afterwards. But the eight feet for the easement will include the city sidewalk. So the widening that we need is going to include everything that would typically be inside of a city road right away, so that the new sidewalk is going to shift and be within this eight-feet corridor. It's all, have you seen on the south side of New Holland, we have existing right away. I don't, that must have been planned at the point where, when that road was constructed, but so it's just going to be a matter of restriping south of New Holland and north of New Holland. That acquisition is needed, basically, to build in a center lane and shift everything that's there out.
Any other questions for Bob? I know Jack and Tobin, if I was the commissioner for that ward, I would expect some calls at some point from your residents.
Of support. Calls of support, you mean?
Yeah.
Because everybody sees the need for this.
Yeah, yeah.
Me, too.
It's a big thing. Anything else, Bob, you want to add?
No, I'd say we don't have a full plan set of city staff yet, but that's what was being finalized today at the GI meeting. So as soon as they add a little bit of notation and a couple little adjustments in notes, we'll have a plan set for everybody to be able to see it, and show us the extent of the improvement.
And you're working with Don, the city engineer, and he's dialed in on all this, I assume, too, right?
Yeah.
Any other questions or discussion from the city commission?
Bob, if this goes through, what is the construction, estimated construction schedule?
We're hoping optimistically right now for June letting.
Okay.
So, I mean, best-case scenario, the intent is to try to get this built before school returns. That would be best-case scenario. I mean, there's no underground involved. It's a paving project with a little bit of curbing and some painting.
That helps.
So, I mean, a four-week window max, hopefully.
Okay.
That's it. Thank you.
Very well. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Commissioner LaRar?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Jessica, for the detailed input and your attention detail on this. Next item on the agenda is appointment to boards and commissions. I do think there's one cover of an application that's here in front of us. I don't know if you want to talk to this, or...
Mr. Mayor, as been done in past practice, staff has met with individuals with regards to the various committees, as stated on the application. And that's something that city staff and I will look to adjust moving forward. I think it would be advantageous for the community and this body to not only have the opportunity to potentially meet these folks that are going to be serving on these boards, but also discuss their qualifications as it relates to the set board. We did reach out, or, excuse me, staff did reach out prior to the meeting. Unfortunately, the individuals did not be able to attend tonight, but that's something that I hope to really hit hard on moving forward, as I think it would provide value, and frankly, just get to know folks that are going to be helping us out along in this process.
I know there's three commissioners here on the dais that came from the farm club, so to speak, and that's why you're here. So it's a pretty important piece that we have when we develop new leadership for the city, because quite frankly, I'm not going to be here too much longer, but maybe a little bit longer. But we all have a finite time on these commissions. Any other discussion on that? Is there a motion?
In past, just more for Tyler, because it's your first meeting, but in the past, I found it helpful that when these applicants were here, if we give them enough notice, they're here.
Yeah.
So they can tell us about themselves versus a piece of paper. So that is extremely, I find it extremely helpful when they're here. We can chat with them or ask questions or just get to know them. It didn't work out tonight, but in past practice, that's been extremely helpful.
We'll look to continue that.
Okay. Anything else?
I'll make a motion to approve the mayor's appointments to boards and commissions as listed.
A second motion. It's been moved and supported. Any other discussion? Hearing none. I'm going to call for a roll on this one, please.
Commissioner LaRar?
Yes.
Branson?
Yes.
Bullheys?
Yes.
DeVray?
Yes.
Groot?
Yes.
Nitre?
Yes.
Mayor Northrop?
Yes. The motion is approved for the mayor's appointments and boards and commissions. Thank you. Before we go to adjournment, we'll just go down the dais. Tobin?
Just an official welcome to you, Tyler. Hope you enjoyed your first meeting.
Thank you. Oh, it's been great.
I really enjoyed having the scouts here. It's a great way to do the Pledge of Allegiance and see the future of the city of Hudsonville, too.
Been a while since we've had anybody come in since COVID, but I think now we're trying to get back to normal, so it's pretty cool. Phil?
I'll second that. Having the scouts here was pretty cool. That never gets old.
Yeah. And they take a lot of pride. They work really hard at it.
Absolutely.
They really do.
Yep. And their parents and their leaders.
Jessica?
Nothing. It's nice to see all of you tonight, and welcome, Tyler.
One thing for Jessica. I wasn't here last time, but we did discuss briefly the Opens Meeting Act, and maybe the need sometime in the spring or summer, we should look to maybe have a training session about Open Meetings Act and FOIA. I do believe there is some curriculum that you said you have that you could present, an hour work session for us, perhaps.
Yeah, we sure do, and we do those refreshers pretty much annually for most of the clients, so it's a good idea.
Yeah, particularly with some of the, some of the things going on in West Michigan. I think we need to make sure we all understand where the boundaries are.
Just let me know.
Going on to you, Larry?
No, I echo on the scouts, and maybe we could get some of the other organizations, youth organizations, maybe, to do that, too. I think it's great to have them involved in here. Welcome, Tyler.
Welcome, Tyler. Jack? Welcome, Tyler. First of many. Jill?
Nomination packets. I had to remember. I didn't write it down. Nomination packets are available in my office for you three there, if you're running again. You, if you're running. And MML CapCon, let me know if you want to go.
Who's signed up so far?
Jack, Larry, you.
CapCon. And the next work session is 6:00 AM, two weeks from now?
6:00 AM.
I mean, 6:00 PM.
I'm not going to be there.
Just want to make sure it is listed.
Have fun by yourself.
Those pain meds really...
6:00 PM, Tuesday.
Terrace Square.
What?
Nope. It's 6:00 PM, the 28th. Terrace Square.
We meet in Terrace Square, so that will be, Terry, would you leave that up?
Bosco's, or?
We could maybe go to Bosco's afterwards and have a burger. How's that?
You got your...
So looking forward to that. Anything else, Jill? Any of the department heads in the audience want to have any additional updates? Very well. I don't know about my colleagues here that are up for reelection. It is my intent to seek a third term as your mayor. As you all know, that this summer, it was not my intent to run a third time, but the circumstances have changed, and I will be seeking a third term. I appreciate all the input I've received from department heads and the commissioners and leaders in the community. It was not something I've taken lightly, but I want everybody on the dais to know I'm extremely privileged to be your mayor and to represent each and every one of you and be my best for you. And I am an open book, and I am open to any kind of constructive criticism to be better for you. So if you think that's necessary, I am available. So having said that, do you have anything to add tonight, city manager? Welcome aboard.
I feel welcome.
And I think we're just really relieved to have you here.
Excited to be here. Staff's been great. I think today is day 10, and every day, we build upon the other day, but the staff's been great. I feel very welcome. It's a testament of this body and staff is the testament of the community in terms of the kinds of people that I look forward to be my neighbors. I feel that me and my fiancee Sarah are in the right place, and we are excited to be here. So thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward to serving the people of Hudsonville.
And you did buy a condo in the sea limits, and...
I'm hoping to close next Friday. Fingers crossed. So far, so good.
Very good. Anything else from the commission? Hearing none. I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Support. It's been moved and supported. All those in favor of adjournings, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.